And I would like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for the Town of Hingham to order on this evening, April 28th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. I know we've got a bunch of folks on the line this evening, so let me take you through how the, how the meeting will run. We've got approval of the minutes, a COVID update, a financial forecast update, a public comment section, an appointment section, and then selectmen and town administrator reports. We'll run through each of these items in order. And as is typically our practice, the board will discuss among themselves the, the topic on the agenda, and then I will open it up to the public for comments. There's quite a number of you on the line tonight, so I'd ask you to be patient with me as they try to recognize you to the extent you'd like to offer some remarks. So I've called us to order. The first item of business on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. We have two sets to approve, April 14th and April 21st. Any comments from my colleagues with respect to either set of minutes?
I've, I've given my comments on April, April 14th minutes. I think they're relatively minor. I had no comments on the April 21st minutes.
Karen, I'm the same way. I'm prepared to vote on both sets.
Okay, I would accept motions.
I move to accept the minutes of April 14th, 2020.
Second.
Oh, you know what? Before we move on, I'm sorry, I forgot to read the, in my, in my haste to our meeting, I forgot to read the, the legal disclaimer. So if you could, if we could hold that motion for a second, I'd just like to inform everybody that this meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. I will inform you that the Town of Hingham is reporting, and I would ask that if anybody on the line is also recording the meeting, to identify yourselves at this time. Okay, seeing none, there's been a motion and a second to approve the minutes of April 14th, 2020. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson? Aye.
And I move to approve the minutes dated April 21st, 2020.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson? Aye. Okay. Next is the COVID-19 update. Tom?
Sure, thank you. Just want to confirm you can hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. So COVID-19 update for today's meeting, I'll start out right here at the top. As you have probably heard, Governor Baker has extended the closure of nonessential businesses, the prohibition on gatherings of more than 10 people, and the Department of Public Health's stay-at-home advisory until Monday, May 18th. So that's moved up from May 4th. So the new advisory suggests that those, those advisories have been extended through Monday, May 18th. Residents are strongly urged to stay home and avoid unnecessary travel and other unnecessary person-to-person contact during this time period. Today, Governor Baker also announced the formation of a 17-member reopening advisory board, which will be comprised of three, three public health officials, three municipal officials, and 11 leaders from the business community. The three municipal officials are the Mayor of Lawrence, the Mayor of East Hampton, and Boston's Chief of Staff for the Mayor's Office. This group is charged with advising the administration on strategies to reopen the economy in phases based on health and safety metrics. It will develop a report by May 18th that will include DPH-approved workplace safety standards, industry frameworks, and customer protocols and guidelines, including enforcement mechanisms and coordination with municipal leaders. While the report is due on the 18th, the administration has made it clear that public health data and guidance from healthcare experts will dictate the timeline of the reopening process. As of today, the Department of Public Health, the DPH, is reporting 4,744 COVID-19 cases in Plymouth County and 58,302 cases in Massachusetts. As of last Wednesday, the last data available, the DPH was reporting 108 confirmed cases in the Town of Hingham. Since the state has been expanding COVID-19 testing, particularly in nursing homes, that accounts for part of the increase in COVID-19 cases reported in Hingham. Please keep in mind that the numbers reported by the state are lower than the actual numbers of cases, as they do not include clinical diagnoses of COVID-19 by medical professionals or people that self-diagnose and stay at home, or asymptomatic people who don't realize that they even have the virus. The CDC has recommended the use of a simple, of a simple cloth face covering to help slow the spread of the virus. Covering your face protects others more than it protects you, so it is most effective when we all participate. On Friday, the Hingham Health Department issued an advisory urging members of the public to wear face coverings when a social distance of six feet can't be maintained, cannot be maintained in public settings, indoors or outdoors. We are distributing signage and will be placing sign boards conveying that message at the transfer station, the bathing beach, and the, and the Carlson Field at the entrance to Bear Cove Park. We're asking everyone to please take this, take this step for the health and safety of the entire community. So that's the COVID updates for today.
Thank you. Michelle, do you have anything further to offer with respect to the COVID updates?
Yes, I have a few town service updates. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. So first is, to date, our Elder Services Department has made 1,000 individual phone calls and sent out four recorded messages about senior center resources and two recorded messages from our executive health officer to 4,700 recipients each time. They've also created a four-minute public service announcement with Harbor Media on updated resources for Hingham seniors, and that announcement is running on the Harbor Media cable channel this week. Our Elder Services Director has been working closely with Hingham Link to connect seniors with resources, especially cloth masks. And finally, senior center staff are also working to introduce more Zoom classes, including yoga, and they'll likely have a memoir-writing group starting a pilot program via Zoom next week as well.
That's awesome.
And then one, one update from our town clerk, Eileen McCracken. She sent out a message yesterday about the town election, which is now scheduled for Saturday, June 27th. We want to encourage as many people as possible to participate in the town election while minimizing their risk to COVID-19. For that reason, Ms. McCracken has posted links to download applications for absentee ballots and early voting ballots on the town website. Residents who complete those applications will receive a ballot by mail. The new state legislation that was passed allows people taking precautions related to COVID-19 to qualify for an absentee ballot for a reason of physical disability. So that includes those who are sick, self-quarantined, or people who simply choose not to go to a public place for their own safety or for a family member's safety. That's something that's, that's new, so it expands our ability to use absentee ballots during this time. The other option is early voting, which is open to any registered voter in Hingham. This, this year at the town election, there will not be any in-person early voting, so we're encouraging folks to participate via mail when possible.
Okay, so just to clarify, really, the only way to vote early is, is via absentee ballot?
Correct.
Okay, so that, so for folks that have gotten used to being able to pop into Town Hall and vote in the clerk's office, Town Hall remains closed at this point?
That's right.
Okay, thanks. Is that it, Michelle?
Yep, that's it from me. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Joe, any questions for Tom and Michelle with respect to the COVID update?
Yes, if, I don't know if either one of you can comment on what the Board of Health is saying with respect to businesses. I understood that there was an order, not an advisory, but a mandatory order with respect to businesses enforcing social distance and posting signage.
Yes, that's correct. That, the Board of Health issued that order last weekend, over the holiday weekend. So that's for all essential workers to wear masks when they can't practice social distancing, as well as for businesses to, to enforce social distancing between customers in their places of business, and like you said, to post signage on the doors. Susan Sarny developed a sign, and we posted that on the town website, and her department has been checking in with food establishments and businesses to make sure that they are enforcing these practices and posting the signage.
Thank you, and thank you both for your vigilance on this.
Anything further, Joe?
Nope.
Okay. Mary, questions with respect to the COVID update?
Yes, just, just one, and Tom and Michelle, thank you for, thank you both for the update. It's, it's not so much a question, but a comment, which is that, and, and Tom, we've talked about this, we've talked about this a few times. I think that for people who are using the recycling area at the transfer station, with everybody's best efforts, it's a little challenging to maintain social distancing, given that, you know, cars pull up and people maybe get out of their vehicle, and, you know, maybe you go to the left to throw it, to recycle your cardboard, maybe you go to the right, you know, for cans or glass, and I would just ask if Randy could just continue to monitor that. I know that many people are wearing masks out there, but I, I just think that the setup makes it a little bit challenging to maintain that social distance, and, you know, now that, you know, now that this advisory is being extended for a few more weeks, I, I would just ask if, if we could continue to be attentive to that and see if any additional measures need to take place with, within that area of the transfer station.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, I have talked with Randy about this. We've thought, we've worked with the management over there. They are monitoring it. As you can imagine, it's a difficult process to, to change the flow. We are, while it's difficult to maintain a constant six-feet different, distance when you're passing people, as you walk by them, we've mentioned, we've talked to Susan Sarny, who said that if people are masked, then that's less of a concern, as long as they're simply passing by. And, but we, we are monitoring that. We are, that's one of the reasons that we're working or increased our, our degree to which we're requesting people mask themselves regardless of where they are.
Yep, and, and I think the signage that you're talking about distributing will also be helpful. So again, I, I know, I know it's, it's a little bit challenging, and in many ways, it also just relies on people, you know, kind of being attentive to what they're doing. So I, I thank you for continuing to keep an eye on it.
You're welcome.
I'm all set, Karen.
Thanks for that comment, Mary. Members of the public, any questions or comments with respect to the COVID-19 update as presented? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to the forecast update. So for folks on the line, the, the financial forecast is the tool that the town uses on an, on an annual basis to project the revenues that, that we will receive, both, both from the tax levy as well as state aid and local receipts. We try to collect all those revenue projections in one place and forecast what we will have to spend on town services. So the forecast is the sort of first building block in the budget process, and we, we start with this really just as soon as town meeting ends. We, we get a picture of where our fund balance is, we have a snapshot of where we think we're going to be for FY '21, and we, we move forward, updating those estimates, you know, on a, on a monthly, if not bi-weekly basis. So this year, many of you have been tuning in, we concluded our budget process on time, as did the school committee and the advisory committee, in order to put forward a balanced budget to town meeting. That budget, though, was based on revenue projections that we understood to be accurate as of sort of that February, early March time period. And as we all know, the world changed drastically, you know, right after essentially we took these votes. So as, as you know, we have extended the date for town meeting to June 22nd, and in the lead-up to that meeting, where we will ask town meeting to approve a budget for the fiscal year 2021, we now need to take a look at those, at the revenues upon which that budget is based, and make some decisions and determinations with respect to what we can accomplish in 2021, and where the money to fund the personnel and services and capital that we all rely on to run the town, where is that going to come from, given the changed, drastically changed nature of, you know, the national, state, and local economy? So tonight is our effort, I think, to, to, for the first time, discuss what we think is realistic in terms of reduced revenue projections, and where we might plug those gaps for FY '21. In addition to that, we will discuss, since it's extremely relevant, how we get through the end of this fiscal year, which, which ends on June 30th, so that the town's on a June 30 fiscal year. So perhaps, Tom and Michelle, we could start, we could start with the projected revenue deficits for FY '20, which would be the end of this fiscal year. So this, this, these projected revenue deficits are from the budget that we're currently in, so this would be the budget that was approved at last year's town meeting. But the, the revenue that we thought we could rely on in balancing the budget by the end of the fiscal year, you know, is, is simply not there in certain pockets. And so we've got to anticipate those deficits, and again, figure out where we get the money to plug those holes. So Tom, if maybe we could start, Tom and Michelle, if maybe we could start with those, and then we can move to FY '21.
Absolutely, happy to. So the projected revenue deficits for FY '20, we've identified four clear places where we're looking at shortfalls. The first is in the meals tax revenue. I think that, you know, with all the restaurants closed, we're anticipating a significant drop in meals tax for Q, the quarter four for FY '20. However, it's difficult to estimate, we, we have very few metrics by which to use to, to estimate what that deficit will look like. So what we've done in an effort at being conservative, which is the, a, a method that you'll see throughout this presentation, we've attempted to be as conservative as is reasonable. And so what we've done in, for FY '20 and Q4, we've anticipated a, a drop by the, by the complete budgeted amount for meals tax revenue in Q4, and that's $129,000. So in other words, we had anticipated receiving $129,000 in meals tax revenue for FY '20 Q4, and now we're budgeting to not receive any of that money. Obviously, we'll receive some because we still receive meals tax revenue from takeout orders, but it certainly won't be what, what had, had been budgeted. So, so there's that $129,000. We're anticipating about $21,800 in penalties and interest lost from collected on, that would have been collected on property tax as a result of the tax due date extension to June 1st. We're also anticipating a $12,000 deficit in investment income as a result of that deferment. And the, the big number that we're seeing is if the country club were to close through the end of May, we're anticipating a little over $200,000, a $212,000 shortfall in, in their operation. So all of that together brings us to about $375,000 or so. We are anticipating being able to offset, or to receive new revenue sources to the tune of about $30,000 through a stimulus grant we received for our ambulances that will lower the projected revenue deficit to about $345,000 in FY '20. I can tell you, I know this is a forecast discussion, so it's really revenue-centric, but I can tell you that we, we, we believe that we have spending controls in place and hiring controls in place that will allow for, for in FY '20, for us to offset that revenue deficit.
Great. And, hey, Tom, one, one quick question. The interest rate, the interest rate assumption for interest income, has that declined as well as the sort of amount we have in the bank to, to base our, our rate calculation on, or is it, is it simply a reduction in the, in the base that's driving that investment income reduction?
Sue Nickerson, do you remember if Jean gave us the, unless, I don't believe Jean is on, but Sue might be. Do you remember if she gave us the, the, the rate?
I don't think it's the interest rate that dropped, because it's, has been dropping since January. It is basically the, the amount of money that we have lost, and that's the interest.
That we would have earned on it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry?
Karen, this is Mary. May I ask Tom a question about the FY '20?
Yeah.
Or would you prefer the questions wait till the end?
No, no, I was gonna, I was gonna take it chunk by chunk, so, sure, go ahead.
Tom and Michelle, thank you for sending the updated forecast documents out to us. If I look at the five-year forecast for FY '20, we were projecting that there would be a, an excess or a surplus of $220,287. So would it be fair to say that, is the projected deficit of 345, does that include the 220, or in fact, is our deficit like $120,000?
Sue?
Hello? Okay, Mary, the, the reason why we had the excess of the 220 is because when we did FY '20, 20, we did not have new growth numbers, the actuals. So that's what's bringing the 220 up.
Right.
So if, if everything comes in, then yes, it, it would be the, the difference.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Say that again, Sue? You, you lost me on that a little bit. So, so we, we projected these revenue deficits, but then in FY '20, we had additional new growth dollars. So where are we for FY '20?
If everything goes according to what we have in this forecast, the, the actual revenue deficit would be the difference between the 345 and the 220.
Okay, okay, great. Mary, since you're, since you're up, do you have any, any other comments or questions with respect to the FY '20 analysis?
No, my four-legged friends are starting to bark, so I'm going to mute myself. I have no further questions on this section.
Well, I kind of like, I kind of like hearing them. It's real world. You know, the one, I guess the one thing I'll say, and then Joe, turn it over to you, is just, and, and I think Mary would say this if she wasn't muted, you notice that we're getting a federal stimulus grant for our ambulance service. So, you know, our fire department runs life support, advanced life support ambulances, and we actually, that's actually a revenue source for the town. But that, that money doesn't go just to the, doesn't go to the fire department. That money comes back to the general fund budget. So what we're talking about here are revenue sources that support all of us, right? Support the entire underpinnings of the town's budget, and then additional revenue sources that we've identified for FY '20 that may come from particular departments, like here comes from the fire department. But again, the fire department doesn't keep it. That's for the benefit of the entire town. So it's, Mary said this before, you know, the, the, we raise and lower all boats, you know, based on everything we have. We put everything on the table, and we try to solve our problems. And so in this case, the fire department is coming forward with, you know, federal stimulus money to help us close this gap. Joe, questions or comments with respect to the FY '20 projected revenue deficits or analysis?
Yeah, I, I had two. The first one picks up on yours with respect to ambulances. So in addition to the federal stimulus grant, is it likely that we'll, we'll simply have increased revenue because of the health emergency that's going on because of increased use of ambulances?
I mean, Tom can respond to that. But the short answer is, for whatever reason, it seems to be flat. But go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, so it, it had been flat up until very recently, Karen. I spoke with the chief yesterday, and, and he let me know that they are seeing in the last couple of weeks an actual decrease in, in ambulance revenue, but it was too early to project. So it was small and, and relatively new. So not only are we not seeing an increase, Joe, I think a lot of folks are nervous about going to the hospital in general, so they're not, they're not using the ambulances as they normally would. But again, very, it seemed like a pretty slight decrease and a very recent one.
So would Chief Murphy be monitoring that?
Yes.
Potentially for, if we vote this next week?
Yes.
We're going to want to know if there are other holes we can fill.
That's exactly right. And we, we are monitoring that. We're going to try to get that, that data in a place where we can project better prior to any votes that need to be taken.
Okay, all right.
And just one other question. The, Tom, I understand that what I've seen says that the expenditure, expenditure controls that the town has implemented will offset the projected revenue deficits for FY '20. Is, is that a complete offset, or is this a partial offset?
Say that again, Joe?
So is the, is the 345 proposed deficit, they're not proposed, that what we're looking at is not going to be completely offset by the expenditure controls that you've identified for FY?
Oh, yes, yes, they will. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, right, we just have to keep our eye on that, because if it, if it changes materially, we may be in a different circumstance.
Sure.
Okay. Great questions, everybody. Members of the public, do you have questions just with respect to fiscal year 20 projected revenue deficits or the other revenue sources that we've identified this evening?
Excuse, if no one else wanted to speak, it's Carol Meyer from the Hingham Anchor.
Hi, Karen.
Hi. I just wanted to be, to, so if the expenditure controls offset the $375,000, how does the $220,287 fit into that? Is that included in the expenditure in that, or would that be an additional, as it pans out the way you're hoping?
You want me to take that, Karen?
Sure.
So Carol, what Sue is, is telling us is that the $220,000 surplus that was shown on the forecast would offset that 375 or the 345, really. And we would, we seeing a, a true deficit as, as of today's projections, and that will likely change by next week, of what, $120,000 or so.
Okay, so how would the, would the expenditure controls get, kind of eliminate the rest of that deficit, or is that with the expenditure controls and the 220?
No, the, 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 the controls, the, the spending controls and the hiring controls will be, will be in place through the end of FY '20, regardless of what this deficit is seeing. And it will be sufficient to cover the deficit, any deficit that we, that we realize in FY '20.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Joe, go ahead.
No, I, it just, I wasn't clear that the, my understanding of the question was, is do the expenditure controls offset the 345, or do they offset the 345 minus the 220?
Either.
Well, if it does one, then it'll, if it does the higher one, then it would be both.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any further questions from the public with respect to fiscal year 20? Okay, so I think that the takeaway is, we are hoping, we are continuing to hope that we can manage the, the close of the FY '20 budget by managing our expenses and our, our hiring, right? So what it means is that any, any, you know, any nonessential dollars, any expenditures that we can hold off on, that's what we're doing, and that's what both the town administrator and the assistant town administrator have been doing for the last several weeks. And that's why we're in a position where Tom can confidently say, at least with respect to the magnitude of the, of the revenue deficits that we're seeing this evening, we will be able to close out FY '20. So, you know, again, I think that we talk a lot on this board about financial stewardship and conservative financial management, and it's as a result of that, and as a result of the careful administration of those dollars by the staff in the Board of Selectmen's office, the town administrator, and the assistant town administrator, that we are in a position tonight to tell you that, rather than telling you that we've got a, you know, tonight to tell you that, rather than telling you that we've got a, you know, closed town hall, or we've got to shut down services, or we've got to take other very drastic measures to get through the end of fiscal year 20. So I, I, uh, respect and appreciate the level of analysis that the, the finance team has, um, put together to understand the impact of, uh, what we're seeing for fiscal year 20. And, you know, our really longtime conservative stewardship with our partners on the advisory committee, um, to be in this place, uh, for the town, uh, this evening. So having said that, uh, we will move to the projected revenue deficits for fiscal year 21. So as I indicated before, uh, when we present a budget at town meeting, we can only spend what we take in. We must present town meeting with a balanced budget. And so we rely on every dollar in the financial forecast, because we, we spend every dollar in the financial forecast, um, to determine service levels and, um, and staffing levels and capital expenditures, uh, for the town. So, you know, you can just imagine, right? We've completed this very long, very public, very detailed budget process, and then the rug is pulled out from underneath, uh, the foundation for those expenditures. So what we're doing tonight is we will identify what those revenue deficits are likely to be based on, uh, conservative, what we view as conservative financial modeling at this point, uh, and some measures, uh, to bring a balanced budget, uh, to town meeting, um, in, on June 22nd. So Tom, if you'd like to take us through, um, the projected revenue deficits now for fiscal year 21?
We're happy to. So we'll start with the, uh, property tax collection rate. So back in, in the, um, in the recession of 2008, 2009, the town realized a 0.4% drop in property tax collection rate. And as a result of that, again, trying to use, uh, data-driven analyses, uh, we have applied that same reduction rate to the FY 21, uh, revenue projections. So that will realize in our, for FY 21, that will, um, bring in approximately $358,000 less than what had been, uh, anticipated or projected initially. So that's a 0.4% reduction in tax collection rate, property tax collection rate. The rest of these are, uh, are, um, revenues that we're, we're, we're going to apply a common, um, reduction, uh, a reduction percentage to. And that percentage is in large part, uh, driven by the, um, recommendation by the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation. And that revenue, or that revenue reduction rate is approximately 14.1%. What they've said is that they're anticipating a 14.1% reduction in state aid, excuse me, in, um, in state revenues in Massachusetts, uh, in FY 21. So what we're doing is we're applying that to the general economy and across all of our revenue streams, um, uh, the, the appropriate revenue streams. So by reducing our state aid by 14.1%, we are likely to realize about $1.4 million less than we had anticipated. That does not include the MSBA funding for the high school. And we are looking at, and I'll get back to, well, okay, so a 14.1% reduction also to the motor vehicle excise tax. Ironically, that's not, uh, based on the Mass Taxpayers Foundation estimates. That one was actually, uh, we level, uh, we held flat the motor vehicle excise tax revenue from 2019. That just so happened to be exactly 14.1% reduction from the projections from FY 21. So, so the, again, uh, in an effort to be conservative, we applied that number there. FY 19, just so you know, the logic was the last year for which we had real numbers. We're still calculating FY 20s, as you can imagine, we're not done with that year yet. So, um, we're anticipating a drop in the meals excise tax for FY 21 by the full amount normally realized in Q1 of FY 21. So similar to how we did it in, uh, at the end of FY 20, we are anticipating zero revenue in meals tax for Q1 of FY 21. Obviously, that's a conservative approach. We will receive, um, something more than $0 in meals excise tax for a Q1. But it's also likely that this, uh, the effects of, um, of the, the economic downturn will trickle into Q2. And again, without clear metrics to use, I didn't wanna simply assume a percent loss in Q2. So we assumed, as we did in FY 20, a complete loss of Q1, thinking that that would even out, uh, between the two quarters. So that's a $221,000 projected, uh, deficit for meals tax. The, uh, we're also anticipating a 14.1% reduction or $56,000, uh, in charges for services, which is, assumes the same decrease as the state aid, $141,000 reduction in licenses and permits. Again, assuming, right? Again, assuming the same percentage do you have reduction. And $200,000 reduction in investment income, which is actually based on cash balance in the bank and the dropping interest rate, to answer your question earlier, Karen.
Okay.
The, we're also anticipating, uh, the last, uh, revenue deficit was $32,800, a 14.1% reduction in a departmental category. So, um, maybe we could stop there. That brings us to about 3.2 or so, 3.1, 3.2 million dollar deficit projected for FY 21. I would, I would note that there's the potential for some, uh, release of excess overlay, uh, to, to offset some of that cost. That's not a done deal yet. I just, uh, that's a possibility. And I'd also remind the public that there will be significant reimbursements of COVID-19 related expenses, but the, those, those reimbursements are truly impossible to project right now. So, uh, it's important to note, though, that those reimbursements would drop straight to fund balance, um, when received. So I, I'm not sure, Karen, if it's best to talk about our anticipated plan for, um, offsetting that, or how that would work, or if you wanna go into questions?
No, why don't you, why don't you close it out?
Sure. So that, that reduction, the, the intent of the, and what we're showing in the forecast is to offset those reductions in revenue with use of fund balance in the fund, in the, um, in the forecast document. Our, our narrative behind that is one that, that ties back to the FY 20 projection, um, projections. So we are expecting, um, significant turnbacks in FY 20 due to, uh, A, our regular, our normal course of, uh, action, which are, are pretty conservative spending, um, uh, in cost controls. But with the expanded cost controls and subsequent hiring controls that we're implementing in FY 20, we are experiencing, we are expecting a significant, um, um, surplus that would be turned back to fund balance, um, to help offset, in our minds, the FY 21, um, projected revenue deficits. Now, it won't offset all of that. There are other, uh, there are other, um, uh, sources of revenue that will drop to fund balance that will help offset some of that, to, to the point that I, I, I am hopeful at this point, um, at least sitting here today, that we hopefully will not be, would not have to drop much below the, um, the existing fund balance excess, uh, excess fund balance numbers that we, that, that were certified at the end of last year. So, um, what I'm saying is I'm hoping to use all turnbacks from, from the school and town budgets, as well as other, uh, dollars that will drop to fund balance to offset the deficits realized in FY 21.
Great, thank you. And you, you know, I think you, you've emphasized it again. I think, I think how we finish up FY 20 will either get us off on the right foot or not for FY 21. And so it really takes, I think, the cooperation and discipline of all of the departments across the town, including schools, to do the best we all can in minimizing expenditures that we can, some of it's timing that we can wait on. As Tom said, you know, maybe there'll be reimbursements that come in, but that timing's not gonna line up, uh, particularly with our, our town meeting, and it's not gonna line up with the first quarter of the fiscal year. Joe, questions with respect to FY 21?
Yes, uh, Tom, you, you mentioned, um, reduction, uh, in state aid, uh, but not including the MSB funding for the high school. What are we thinking, uh, is gonna happen with respect to foster school funding?
Oh, great question, Joe. Um, I've had several conversations with state officials, including the, um, the Department of Revenue, and they're all, they're been extremely consistent with the message that the programs, the, the funding programs that are in, that are in program right now, are, they are not anticipating any, um, any effect to those programs. What they are saying, though, is that future, uh, future MSBA funding, uh, funding projects, funded projects are likely to be, uh, to, there's likely to be less money available for future projects that are not yet in program. So it should not, as of right now, it should not affect, um, our foster, uh, our foster acceptance or the money we would receive in any way. That's what they're saying now.
Great. And just one other question. You mentioned, uh, that it's, you know, we're certainly gonna be applying for reimbursement, reimbursements for COVID-19 related expenses, though it's hard to calculate. Are there other grant opportunities available, either from the state or the federal government, that are not COVID-19 expenses, but really to help towns offset revenue, uh, drops?
I, I can't speak to anything particular. I will say that, uh, we are tracking and continue to, to research every possible new revenue stream and/or, um, expense reimbursement possible. So, um, I, I can't speak to anything in particular, though, Joe.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Joe. Mary?
Tom, could you, um, you mentioned that, um, you have instituted some cost and hiring controls. Could you please just describe those a little bit, please?
Sure, so on, for, for instance, our Department of Public Works, we have a, an assistant, um, an assistant department head position that we had intended to, to fill back in early March, and have decided to forego that, uh, in the meantime. Uh, that, there was also an admin position over there that we were gonna fill and have, um, again, postponed that, that, um, that effort or that hiring, uh, that saving some, hopefully some significant dollars between those two positions alone. There are, uh, there are additional, uh, positions that, um, Michelle, I don't know if you can think of anything beyond those two, I know there are others, but.
One recent one that came before the board was the Harbor Masters' request to hire assistants for the summer. And as you know, he hired, or we're proposing to hire fewer than we normally would, um, just given the current situation. But as other positions become vacant or, or these things come up, we're, we're evaluating everything. We're evaluating all of the capital projects right now and any, any large person, purchases, um, to see what we can postpone or to see what we can forego at this time.
Thank you. And, um, Tom, in terms of just kind of tracking costs and seeing how we're doing, um, are we doing anything with greater frequency or things that we don't typically do to just really try to, you know, keep an eye on these costs?
Exactly. So, uh, on a quarterly basis, as I think the board knows, um, Town Accountant Sue Nickerson, uh, does a, a review of all of the departmental budgets. I would say that that effort is an, is a, is an ongoing effort. To say that it's being, it's being done weekly is probably, it's probably being done more often than that. She's tracking, um, uh, expenses from each of these budgets and their subsequent position compared to their overall budget on a, on a, on an ongoing basis.
Okay. And, um, you know, recognizing that the school budget is twice as, twice as much money as the municipal budgets, um, do, do you and Michelle have a sense of, uh, what specific actions are being taken with respect to the school budget in terms of cost control or cost management?
So I have spoken with this, uh, to the school superintendent about this a couple of times. Uh, he has assured me that there are, um, that there are cost, uh, expense measures in place and that they're tracking every dollar. We had a conversation with them yesterday where they reiterated that statement. I, I don't have specifics for you, Mary.
Do we have a sense of, uh, what sort of turnbacks we can expect to receive on the, um, $53 million budget this year?
So what they told us yesterday in the, uh, forecast discussion was that we could expect in the, in the ballpark of $100,000 turnbacks.
Oh, my.
And, um, and in terms of, Tom, the municipal budget, um, do we, I, I realize that the quarter has just closed and, and for the municipal budget, some of that is significant, but, um, do, do we have a sense, or can we get a sense of some kind of range of turnbacks that we might expect to see on the municipal budgets?
Sure, I'd be happy to calculate that out, yep.
Okay, so it's, it's not something you can report on tonight, but it's something that perhaps, you know, we, we could take a look at for next week?
Of course, sure.
I mean, I, you know, if I look at the fund balance memo, um, I think that the municipal budget turnbacks, um, in past years, you know, obviously they range, um, but, but they have been, um, uh, they have been substantial. I realize that right now, um, particularly our public safety teams are probably incurring additional expenses related to COVID. So I, I know there's a lot of ins and outs, but i- in terms of a path forward, I think it would be really helpful to just kind of get an order of magnitude of what some of these, um, budget turnbacks can be. Karen, I had, I had one more question. Tom, in terms of capital spending, are there any opportunities to defer any capital items, um, you know, really a, a, across both municipal and school departments?
Yeah, absolutely, there will be, yes.
Okay, and, and have we identified any specific things, or is that, is that work that we're gonna be doing?
That's, we'll be tracking those. I'll, I'll tell you, we're not buying anything right now. We're not paying, we're, we're not moving forward with any of that right now, but as far as a list, I can absolutely put that together for you, about what's, what's remaining from FY 20's expenditures. It's probably gonna be a longer list of what we can control in 21, but we'll look at what's, what's left in 20, and I assure you that we're not moving forward with any after, you know?
Karen, I, um, I, I wanna give you some, um, an opportunity to ask some questions. I had a couple kind of comments, having reflected on this budget a little when the time is right. I would just close by saying that, um, after five years of advisory and six years on the Board of Selectmen, this is the most challenging financial circumstance that I've experienced.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, I was on the advisory committee during the recession, as I see some participants on the call were as well, and, you know, that was, that was challenging. But the uncertainty here and the, the, the global nature of, uh, this economic crisis, and, and I think no, no clear line of sight to when, you know, normalization returns to any of our activities. You know, and I know we're speaking economically, it's, it's a, it's a stressful time overall, but it's, it's significantly stressful time economically, I know, for the families and citizens of our community, and, um, and that shows up on our balance sheet as well. You know, it, it, to me, it, it feels different than working our way through that economic recession. This just has a qualitative, um, qualitatively, you know, more, more significant and more unknown, uh, outcome. So I, I would join you in, um, in that sentiment. I would say, I would make one comment, and then, you know, I'm happy to have you make some additional comments, Mary. We particularly talked, uh, with, um, our school department colleagues on Monday, as well as the advisory committee folks, about, um, capital expenditures, because that, that does allow us some flexibility, I think. Again, um, sometimes just with respect to timing. So, you know, what is left to buy? So our capital outlay committee approves a budget. Sometimes, you know, sometimes, uh, schools will also use operating dollars to buy capital. And so the question is, you know, across the town, including schools, what's left to purchase for FY 20 that we don't have to buy? That's one exercise. And then what might we buy? You know, what, what would we have looked forward to buying in the first quarter of FY 21 that we should, we should or could put on hold? So we have asked, um, our school department colleagues to undertake that exercise as well. Did you, do you have further thoughts, Mary?
Yeah, you know, um, I, I guess the, the, a, a couple things, you know, um, I'm, you know, I, I'm watching, like I know everybody is, you know, what's going on with, you know, with any sort of federal support? Because back in 2008, Karen, you'll probably, you'll probably remember that there was federal money coming in. And, um, you know, I, I think right now, at least, there doesn't seem to be a lot of federal support for any sort of stimulus to help states and municipalities. I think if, you know, what Jean Montgomery would tell us is that in 2008, Hingham actually Hingham actually saw a reduction in property tax collections in like a year and two years later. So I think that, you know, while we try to be conservative and Tom and Michelle have done a wonderful job with conservative, I think we all have to be realistic that this, this is not as bad as it could get. The 14.1% reduction could get worse. The property tax collection rate could get worse. We're just looking at one year, not two. And, you know, I, I guess in light of that, you know, it, it kind of feels like, and, and Tom and Michelle, thank you for what you've done. You know, I don't want people to think that we're kind of waving a magic wand and saying, well, you know, we've got this $3 million revenue deficit and we're going to plug it with fund balance and call it a day. I, I think that, you know, we're.
And then when you.
Well, it doesn't matter. No, it doesn't.
And, and I think what we're, you know, what we're, what we're trying to do is to look at what would be some very difficult choices to reduce spending. Because to me, if I think about going into town meeting in June, I want to be able to say to the taxpayers, we've done with the town budgets what you've all done with your household budgets. We're looking at ways to, ways to reduce our spending and we're trying to keep our, our rainy day fund lasting. And, you know, as I look at it, I think, as I said earlier, I'd, I'd like to get a sense of the potential turnbacks in the municipal budget, because I think that would be helpful. I'd also like to see the detail on the school budget forecast because frankly, I'm very surprised that a $53 million budget.
Absolutely.
Have 100,000 in turnbacks.
Absolutely.
You know, I know we're going to talk about this next week, but, you know, the, the bottom line for me is that as difficult as it is, we as a town may have to make some tough choices. And, you know, as, as I've said before, I think we need to share the gain and share the pain. And right now there's pain. But what I really worry about is that, is that if we have to institute more severe expenditure control measures like what Tom and Michelle have described, I don't want them to disproportionately fall on the municipal budgets because they'll fall on the backs of our essential workers and first responders and the people who are going above and beyond for everybody in this town right now. You know, we need to keep in mind that if the FY21 budget's approved, the Board of Selectmen influences 29 million of that and, and our elected school committee colleagues influence 57 million. So I guess what I'm kind of trying to think about is what kind of assurances can we get from our colleagues on the school committee that if this gets worse or if we have to institute more severe expenditure control measures, that they're in with us? Because again, I, I think we got to share the pain and share the gain. And, you know, I, I, I think we need to talk about that next week because, you know, as much as I'd hate to open up the FY21 budgets, if that's the only way to assure that, that we're going to get through this, I don't think we should take it off the table. So thank you for listening.
Yeah, no, and I, I think, you know, I think we probably should have started out with this, which is, this is one way to get to a balanced budget, which is to say, given the level of uncertainty and given the financial position we're in and given our expectation of turnbacks and capital controls and hiring controls that would extend into FY21, we, you know, we think it's, it's reasonable to recommend this budget as is, which is an expensive operation of the town. Because we, we believe, right, that either A, things will normalize and we will, we will come back to some revenue levels like we're anticipating. Or B, frankly, Mary, the FY22 budget process is going to be a nightmare, right? So if, if this is our economic reality on, on a much longer term scale, in a, in a material way, it's going to change entirely, I think, that our view of both the municipal and school budget for FY22. So the question that, the way I've sort of framed it for myself is, is it reasonable to get through this period, including FY21? And during FY21, we'll, we'll need to, to, to learn and model. And, and pretty soon, right into the, into the fall of next year, we will need to be projecting what our budget process would look like for FY22. Or to your point, you know, do we tighten that belt right, right now? Do we go into town meeting, open, open up the FY21 budget, go into town meeting and cut town services and staff now? And I guess where I, where I was coming out and I, and I continue to come out is I think this is, as dire as the situation is, it seems like it changes every, every day, every week for sure, if not every day, right? And so given our, what I would call our outstanding conservative fiscal stewardship, and again, I, I see folks on the call that have participated over the long haul in that, we're, we are in a position to have this kind of choice. I think there are other municipalities across the Commonwealth that are not having the conversation that we are having tonight. And, and that is because of the careful measures that, that Tom has outlined that are part of our day-to-day life. I mean, you know, yes, we've instituted a sort of greater restriction, but you've heard our board, you, the public have heard our board talk about this all the time, where we're careful with every dollar you give us. And we are. So I, I hear you on it, Mary. You know, again, I think we'll know more next week. We'll have more information, I think, from our, our school committee colleagues, our school department colleagues. And we will have to make a choice in, in, in sort of signaling our, our direction to the advisory committee, right? Because it's really the advisory committee that's going to have to look at this and determine whether this use of fund balance makes sense for the coming fiscal year. But it's our, you know, kind of our leadership and our signal to them that, you know, we're confident that we can try to manage through, manage through some of these issues in a way that positions the town to minimize, to minimize its, you know, its, its use of really what is very precious fund balance. And I will say that although, although you're absolutely right, this, that particularly the latest round of federal stimulus money wasn't aimed at municipalities or states. You know, I did talk with Senator O'Connor, I guess at the end of last week. And he, he was projecting that the governor would make, would make funds available to the state, both from the, the state stabilization fund. There's, there'll, there'll be some savings around mass health. So I do think the governor is obviously concerned about the state budget, but also concerned about making sure the municipalities can continue to function.
Yeah. And, and you know, Karen, I think what you're illustrating is, you know, everyone has to pitch in on this. We're not, you know, everybody, everybody has to pitch in. And you're certainly right that we, Hingham's ability to weather this is enhanced by our very strong position. I guess at the end of the day, what, what I'm kind of thinking about is, I'm thinking about facing our fellow citizens at town meeting at the end of June. And, you know, given that we've all talked about fund balance and everybody knows how significant it is, I'd rather go in there as a leader in this town and say, we're tapping into fund balance, but, but we've been able to offset some things. So again, I, I don't know what the right answer is, but if we can at least demonstrate that we've been trying to curtail our expenses, I think that it will bolster the voters' confidence that we are spending their money wisely and that we are doing the exact same thing that many households are doing in Hingham. So, you know, I'm not suggesting that we, that we don't tap into fund balance, but I, I think it's really kind of a matter of balance.
Yep, yep. But I guess, you know, I, I do think there's a, there are choices here, right? And, and that's, I think we're fortunate to have this choice. But to your point, I think, I think, you know, our posture seems to be aligned, which is, okay, we saved. We, we, we think it's prudent to use some of that savings, but we really, we really want to minimize the impact of all this on that savings account.
I might have just, just one more thought. Tom and Michelle, I wonder if it might be a good idea to reach out to our financial advisors, to capital markets? You know, get a sense from them, because, you know, this is their world, about, you know, the impact of fund balance drawdown. And, you know, that might, that might give us a line of sight into the degree to which, you know, that would, that would trigger any alerts on their end. Because obviously, that will be important as we look at, you know, the, the major infrastructure projects in the town, which aren't going to go away.
Happy to do that. Absolutely.
Anything further, Mary?
No, thanks.
Are there questions from the public with respect to the FY21 projected revenue deficits? Questions from the public? Okay. So my intent on process here is that it sounds like Tom and Michelle, you've got some homework to do between now and next week. I need to get my calendar in front of me. So my, my hope was that we would be in a position to, to vote these numbers next week. Because I want to give the advisory committee time to consider, to take our, our, you know, to consider what we're, what we're suggesting. And the advisory committee chair, Victor Bolterra, was hoping to hold two meetings. And then if they come up with a different solution than we've identified, we also need an opportunity to potentially rehear the budget. So my hope again was that this forecast really serves as our socialization of a path forward, understanding that we need some additional information to, I think, feel comfortable recommending that path. But that my hope was to be able to vote, to vote these, this new Article Six presentation at our next meeting, which is May 5th, right?
Yes.
Karen, this is Joe.
Yeah.
To what extent do we need to hear from the school committee prior to our vote on the budget?
Well, I think, I, I think my suggestion, I think aligns with Mary. And I had this conversation with Tom offline, which is that I think this week, you know, would be our, our suggestion that he, that he talk with the superintendent and the business, business manager for the schools to, to come back with the information that I think we're looking for, for next week. And, you know, to, to the extent that's insufficient or to the extent that that's, that information would change our course of action, I think that we could, you know, we can make that determination next week. So I, I guess I'd like to put this on for a vote. But if we're not ready to vote, you know, I think we could hold, you know, I think my preference probably would be to hold another meeting that week if we could, you know, which would mean potentially the seventh.
Yep. And that makes sense.
Hey Karen, just to taper on what Joe was saying, you know, to, to me, what would be really, really helpful, and I don't know how we get this, but, you know, it would be really helpful to get some sort of assurance from probably the school committee that if, if additional expenditure, you know, if, if extraordinary measures were required during FY21, that the school committee was prepared to do them. Because, you know, I, I don't necessarily want to start the year anticipating worst case and have things be better. But, you know, I gotta know that if, if we have to take some difficult steps during the year, that we're not taking them alone.
I, I think that's right. And there's, there is no harm in planning. And if it turns out we've got a wonderful rosy 20, 2021 budget, or not 20, 2021 actual economy, that'd be great. But we should go in planning and knowing that we've got the options and identify those options so that we're not scrambling at the last minute to make decisions.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that. And, and I guess the other thing I would say, right, is that I think it's going to be important, and I know Tom and Michelle have both raised this point, that, you know, the, the forecast group typically kind of trails off at the beginning of the fiscal year, just a year, you know, we've approved our budget and we're kind of moving into things. And there's, there's very little change at that point. And I think that, I think that going forward, we're going to want this group to meet, it would strike me, you know, bi-weekly or, you know, I, I think we've really got to be focused on the revenue aspect because it's going to change. And, and to your point, it influences then when and if we undertake more drastic measures. And so if we're not, if we're not carefully monitoring the revenue projections, you know, we, we don't want to be caught flat-footed, I guess is what I'm saying. So we, I, I think we, we need to institute appropriate financial planning that's maybe more, I won't say more attentive, but more regularized than we've done in past fiscal years.
Yes. I mean, I know you and Mary are veterans at doing budgets. This is my first budget. I am certainly being initiated the hard way.
They're all like this, Joe.
I don't want to hear that.
Well, and, and you know, Joe, what's important for you to, for everybody to understand is that once the budgets are authorized, everybody has the discretion to spend. And so, you know, again, if, if we get into the first quarter of next year and things are not looking good, keep in mind that the Board of Selectmen can only control $29 million of that budget. So that's where to me, the, the assurance is that if difficult choices have to be made, we will be making them together becomes very important. Otherwise, otherwise it's, it's all on the, it's not fair and equitable.
I, I hear you. And I think we can develop a plan to address that.
Okay. Further comments from my colleagues, for the questions from my colleagues? Questions from the public? I think nobody had any questions at this point. Okay.
Karen, I think there's someone with their hand up, ending in 2460.
Okay. Is there, did you unmute them?
Yeah, they're not muted.
Okay. Extension 2460, do you have a question?
No, it's just me. I had to use the other phone.
Okay. Thanks for joining us. Okay. I think we're going to move on then. So we will be back next week. You know, my intent, as I said, is to put this on for a vote. We will have, at that point, additional information, both on the town side as well as the school side. And we'll make a determination next week whether we're comfortable moving forward with a vote or, or whether we'll need a little additional time. But thanks. That was a really thorough discussion. I appreciate my colleagues' questions and comments. And I appreciate all the work from our finance team, you know, Gene and Sue and Rick and Tom and Michelle. Really with, with everything else you have going on and, and the, I think the management, the remote management of a town government, this is a very significant effort to give us the tools we need to begin to, to plan to present to town meeting.
You're welcome.
Okay. So next on the agenda is public comment. Okay, so next on the agenda is public comment, and this is for items that are not on the agenda this evening. Does anybody have, um, any public comment at this point? Okay. Uh, any appointments this evening?
No.
Uh, Selectmen Town Administrator Reports, Tom.
Uh, Michelle, do you wanna go first?
Uh, nothing from me, thank you.
So I just wanted to, Karen, thank you. I just wanted to, uh, give a, a, um, a, a, a public, let the public know that their, um, representatives at the state level have been very proactive and helpful, um, to me and the local government here on a regular basis. Both Senator O'Connor and, um, and Representative Moschino have been, uh, have been fantastic, proactive, sending along notices, information from the state as they get it, and then helping us along the way, understand what the, uh, the new emergency legislations that seem to come out hourly, never mind daily. Um, but they're both, uh, they're both excellent at their jobs. I just wanted to give them a shout-out.
Yeah, I, I completely agree. They have been, they've been on it, um, both of them. I, you know, tremendous outreach, I think, outreach to individual taxpayers, help with unemployment. Um, Senator O'Connor and, and Representative Moschino conducted that, uh, small business, um, update for the CARES Act. I just think a, a lot of time and attention, um, with respect to, you know, the constituents here on the South Shore. And as I indicated, um, you know, Senator O'Connor is the ranking member of the Senate Ways and Means Committee, and so he's very tied into the budget deliberations, and is, I think, a, a great advocate for municipal aid, particularly municipal aid for the communities that he represents. So, I, um, I think it's a really, really great partnership, and I, I second that. I really appreciate, um, uh, you know, their, um, their outreach to us, but also their availability, you know, when, when we have a question to, um, to be responsive. So, I, thanks for bringing that up.
You're welcome.
Uh, okay, Board of Selectmen Reports, Joe.
Um, not a report. I really wanted to, uh, give a special thanks to the National Guard, but especially the ten fifty-eighth Transportation Company, which is based out of the Hingham Armory, that's been transporting PPE to communities throughout the Commonwealth during the COVID nineteen pandemic. They've been running missions every day since Governor Baker activated them a month ago, and they've logged over twenty-three thousand miles in that time. So, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, Mary?
Uh, yeah, a couple things. Uh, first of all, uh, last night, I was actually, um, I attended the, uh, Water Company Transition and Evaluation Committee meeting. Um, the, uh, Transition and Evaluation Committee is made up of five residents who have been working with, um, with environmental partners and with Jeff Noding on the DEP Business Plan and the Rules and Regulations. And, um, I just wanted to let people know that that work is going along. And, and also Karen and Joe, because, you know, we can't, we can't talk about this stuff. I know both of you have invested a lot of time in the last week in reviewing the business plan and the rules and regulations, and, um, it's, it's very helpful as we continue to, you know, move towards the town's acquisition of the water system. Um, I also had one, one other thing, and, um, Karen and Joe, this is, this is something where I need your help. Um, as you know, I am the lia, the board's liaison to the, um, to Plymouth County. They have an advisory board made up of a, a member of the Board of Selectmen from all of their communities. Um, very late this afternoon, I received notice that on Thursday, um, I've been asked to participate in a Zoom call with the advisory board. And, um, my understanding, based on what Tom has told me, is that there is a question as to, um, apparently Plymouth County applied for, um, funding under the CARES Act, and there is an outstanding question of whether the administration of those dollars should be left to Plymouth County or left to the state. Um, I will represent the town of Hingham on Thursday night at six o'clock on this call, but I might ask that if you could please, um, find time between now and then to talk with Tom a little bit about it. I wanna make sure that in, um, to the extent that there's discussion or a vote, I wanna make sure that my vote reflects the town of Hingham's position and not my individual position. So, uh, to the extent that you have any questions or input for Tom, if you could provide that to him, I would appreciate it.
Mary, do you know, do you know how much money they're talking about?
Yeah, it's ninety million dollars.
It's a lot of money, Karen, it's a lot of money.
Yeah, so Tom, can you, can you schedule calls, uh?
Of course, yes, yeah.
And, and this really, this, this is a, this is just the question of administration, and, you know, I, I haven't gotten a lot of information, Tom's had information, but, you know, what's, what's important to me as, as the board's representative to Plymouth County is that, is that I'm speaking on behalf of the board and on behalf of the town. So, to the extent that you have questions, concerns, considerations, um, I would, uh, I would, it would be helpful if you could funnel those through Tom. Um, and that way, you know, that way Hingham is best represented Thursday. And, um, to the extent that there are any developments that come out of that meeting, I will certainly update Tom, uh, first thing Friday morning so that he can, you know, communicate that. Um, Plymouth County has asked that only one representative from every town participate in the Zoom call, so.
I know, I'll, I'll talk to Tom, but, um, is this money earmarked for anything in particular?
You know, Karen, I, I just got this, uh, a little while ago, so I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Yeah, Karen, I, I, I don't know the specifics on it. I know that it's the money that a lot of the, um, other counties are having the state administer on their behalf. Uh, the Plymouth County leadership apparently has decided to have, to administer it themselves for Plymouth County towns. Um, but that's about all I know. I don't know the details of what it's intended, uh, to, uh, to pay for. Um, I believe it's COVID-related expenses, but I'll be getting all those details and, and speaking with the three of you as soon as I know.
Yeah, you know, to the extent, I'm just sort of thinking out loud here, but to the extent that either of you have any questions, you know, I can certainly forward those to the, um, you know, to, to Plymouth County. I think they try very hard to, um, be responsive to questions. And, you know, I'd certainly be happy to forward any questions to them on Thursday during the day because, um, you know, it, it may just, it may just help with this.
Okay, okay, um, great. I don't wanna get too far into it since it's not on the agenda, but thanks for, uh, thanks for raising that. Anything further?
I'm good.
Okay. Um, I think that leaves me, and, um, I have, uh, I have, I guess, the, uh, the unfortunate news of, of sharing with you the fact that the town lost to Greater Merkin on, uh, Monday evening. Uh, Hank Maud, uh, many of us know Hank. Uh, he was a US Army veteran, uh, a member of the Greatest Generation, and, uh, Mr. Hingham to a lot of folks. Uh, I'm gonna read a little bit of, of Hank's, uh, if you will, town resume, which is long and broad. Uh, he was a team builder, uh, a worker. Uh, I think the folks that came into contact with him, uh, loved his spirit and his enthusiasm. Um, and, uh, so I'd like to share a little bit about, um, uh, what Hank has done here in Hingham, and then, uh, just share really the first time I met Hank. So, um, you know, Hank served on the Hingham's Vet, Hingham Veterans Council from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, and he was the initial representative from, um, Linden Ponds, and really, really instrumental in the development of the Linden Ponds, um, Veterans Group. Uh, and then, the thing that I guess I loved was, then Hank wasn't content with that, right? Then he reached across and really built a bridge, uh, with the town of Hingham and our Veteran Service Officer, Keith German, um, to make sure that the veterans at Linden Ponds were connected with the veterans in the Greater Hingham community. He served as president of the Linden Ponds Veterans Association. Um, he, he assisted Keith, our Veteran Service Officer, to make sure that folks there knew that they were entitled to benefits under Massachusetts law. Um, I know him particularly because he arranged and hosted, uh, the Linden Ponds Memorial Day and Veterans Day observances for years. And, uh, Molly St. John, who's the Communication and Events Coordinator at Linden Ponds, uh, I think is an enthusiastic fan of Hank's, um, and in part because of his participation and really organization of these really great celebrations. He coordinated the Linden Ponds Honor Flight and the Field of Flags program. I don't, I don't know if any of you have seen from time to time the pictures that were run of the Field of Flags at Linden Ponds, um, and it really is just a, a breathtaking sight. Uh, he collaborated with the Fourth of July Parade Committee for an annual presence by the Linden Ponds Veterans Association. He provided veteran residents the opportunity to meet monthly with both, uh, our town's Veteran Service Officer and the state, uh, state legislature, legislators. Um, and he fostered interaction between the High School Veterans Appreciation Club and the Linden Ponds, uh, Veterans Association at many civic events. Uh, I remember very vividly walking into Linden Ponds, it might have been last year, with, with, um, Mary and Paul, and the Veterans Appreciation Club was there in their dramatic, uh, red polo shirts, um, looking snappy and smiling and enthusiastic, holding pictures or displaying pictures of various battle sites around the world. And one of those sites happened to be the site where Paul Healy's dad served, um, hosting Reservoir in Korea. And, uh, you know, I think, as I've said to the members of the Veterans Appreciation Club before, they just don't know how vital they are and how important they are, and how much it means, I think, to these folks who have served, um, that, that the students take an interest and, um, show that respect and appreciation for our veterans. And, and Hank helped foster that at Linden Ponds. So, you know, you, you sort of think of Linden Ponds as this standalone community. And, and again, I think, I think Hank was the one that really aimed to build bridges. Um, he provided ongoing and wide-ranging support to Hingham veterans, um, at Harbor House and the Lincoln School Apartments. Um, he helped feed veterans nutritious prepackaged meals, um, at the Commander Anderson Veterans Home. Um, he raised and donated funds to the town, Town of Hingham Veterans in Need Fund on numerous occasions. And he participated in the, um, the annual history exposition at GAR Hall. Uh, and can, can you imagine the, the fortunate nature of the students who encountered Hank, uh, to share his real, real-life stories of, uh, World War Two? Um, you know, he, he lived, according to his family, just a wonderful ninety-two years. Um, we are sorry to lose him. Um, he just was an institution here, uh, both in, at Linden Ponds, but more broadly in Hingham community. And that was because of all the effort he took, uh, to, to build those bridges. So as I said, I, I was delighted to meet, um, Hank in twenty seventeen, uh, as a, you know, brand-new member of the Board of Selectmen, um, joining in the observations at Linden Ponds that Hank, um, so thoughtfully, uh, pulled people together for. So, if you would join me just for a moment, um, if we could take a moment of silence in Hank's honor and in his memory, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Godspeed, Hank, we'll miss you. Uh, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Mary Johnson?
Aye.